The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentation of audit.
Okay, Chris, we're ready. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me okay now?
There we go.
Yeah, there we go. We got you.
User error, I'm sure. Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we'll get started here. I appreciate you guys doing this by Zoom meeting. First-year client for us, a lot of times I like to go out there and kind of put a face to the names and see me, but it is helpful doing this by Zoom and certainly with a good outstanding audit that you guys received this year. I do appreciate you guys' cooperation on doing it by Zoom. We have, I think, 20 board meetings throughout the state this week between all of our staff spread out. So as you know, this is kind of the final requirement. Can you see me here? I'm sorry. I don't know that you need to either, but for what it's worth, I may not be able to share the screen here with you, but I hope that everybody has copies of the audit. And I'm going to try to sum this all up in a few pages. This is, again, the final requirement as part of your audit process last year, that basically I present the audit to the board, go over any questions, the concerns, and obviously our findings in the audit. But most of the information, I can summarize in a few pages. Feel free to stop me at any time. I'm going to start on page 14 of the audit. And if you're looking at the hard copies, then it will be page 14. If you're looking at the PDF files, sometimes the page numbers might be a little different depending what's attached on there. But page 14 is basically a summary page of the audit. We have three different reports we put in here: our independent auditors report, a report on internal control compliance, and then a federal programs report. Item number one on page 14 is related to that first report, your independent auditor's opinion. This is basically your standard audit report. Bethany's job is to provide accurate financial statements. Our job is to provide an opinion on those financial statements. We actually issue two different opinions because you follow a regulatory basis of accounting. We issue an adverse opinion with respect to GAAP accounting. This is no different than it's always been, looking back on Bethany's audits. No different than it is on 99% of the schools in Oklahoma. Basically, if you don't follow GAAP accounting, your financial statements are presented on this regulatory basis of accounting, which is what's prescribed by the State Department of Education. This is basically OGAAP. It's just a different format from normal financial statements. With respect to that regulatory basis, we should have qualified opinions, which means that we believe the financial statements are presented fairly, with one exception that there's not a fixed asset number on your balance sheet. This would be if you depreciated your buildings, buses, equipment, larger items over estimated useful life. You don't. You expense them on a purchase order each year. This is another area that's no different than pretty much every school in the state does and no different than Bethany has always done. So if you will, it's a departure from normal accounting, but nothing to worry about because you do it like everybody else in kind of the normal format on the State Department of Education basis and presentation that they like. So basically, long story short, we believe the financial statements are presented fairly in the audit. Items two and three are related to our second report. Even though it's a financial statement audit, since you're considered a governmental entity as a school district, while we're auditing the financial statements, if we identify any weaknesses in internal controls or areas of non-compliance with state statutes, anything that's material to the financial statements, this is basically where we would outline. Basically, this is where the findings are. If we had audit findings, they would be in that second report. There were no findings that we thought warranted going in the audit itself. I'll touch on the management letter here in just a moment, where we've kind of got our immaterial findings, general observations, basically everything that we recommended or noted during the audit. As your first-year auditor, there's always going to kind of be some things that are different. I kind of got the sense it was a little stressful for some of the staff, having new auditors come in, which is completely understandable. I hope we made it as painless as possible. But, you know, everybody looks at things a little bit differently. And even within our firm, we look at things a little bit differently. What may be important to me may not be as important to another auditor and things like that. And so we try to rotate within our firm too, to kind of get different eyes on things. So, but I don't want any of these findings on the management letter to take away from a really outstanding audit that didn't warrant being in the audit itself. So, and then the rest of the items on here, four through nine, and that section two and three, are related to the federal part of the audit. Since you expend a certain amount of federal dollars, it kicks you into kind of this third level of auditing, where basically we just have to do additional compliance testing and auditing on major federal dollars. For you guys this last year, and I think for the last couple of years, is the COVID money. Ether one, ether two, cares. That's basically the government told auditors you have to audit that to be major. And so that's kind of taken our attention these last several years. I think as that winds down, it did wind down, next year is kind of going to go into that rotation of Title I, special ed, child nutrition. At least that's kind of our typical rotation when it comes to those major federal dollars. That being said, no findings with respect to that federal money. An unmodified opinion was issued on that federal financial report, which is the highest opinion we could give. Unmodified always to me sounds bad, but it's not. That's what you're looking for. We don't want to modify it, so. With respect to the financial statements, a few pages over, page 16. Page 16 is basically an income statement for each major fund category. That first column there, general funds, certainly your most important fund, your main operating fund, at 18.8 million in total revenues, 18.1 million in expenditures. So brought in about 685,000 more revenue than you expended in the previous year or you expended during the year, and it brought your carryover balance. Down there, those bottom two numbers, from 4.5 billion to just over 6 million at the end of the year, 6,42,000. I think that's an outstanding carryover balance. Everybody always likes to ask where do we stand with our schools? Is that good or bad? It's hard to judge. Each school independently. So much contrast between schools throughout the state and rural areas and city areas. A general rule or a general guideline I like to look at is 10 or 15%. If you need 10 or 15% of your total revenues, so for you guys, 1.8 million to 2.3 million, 10 or 15% of that revenue numbers, that's what most schools are carrying over. You're at 6 million. Outstanding, obviously, carryover. You guys are very healthy shape there. There's obviously been penalties or can be penalties for carrying over too much in the general fund. Once you back out to federal revenues, not as bad as you think. And those penalties have been waived for the last several years. So certainly nothing that applies this year, but you guys are kind of on that threshold of where you're in really good shape in that general fund carryover balance. That's a good problem to have, and schools need that carryover to operate at the beginning of the year. Tax money doesn't come in until December, January. State aid adjustments are in December, January. And so that first half of the year, schools rely on that, on that carryover balance. So you guys are in really good shape there. The special revenue funds, that next column there, since you operate your child nutrition within the general fund, this is really just your building fund. Here just shortly, that bottom number down there, 1.2 million carryover in the building fund. Again, this is just kind of a comparison of what I'm seeing throughout the state. Most schools carry over about a year's worth of tax money in their building fund. For you guys, you know, about 100,000. Obviously, you get a lot more different money, whether it's Red Bud or different federal sources you could put in that building fund. That being said, a district your size, what you bring in tax money, it's an outstanding carryover balance in that building fund. Why do you have bond funds and different things where you can supplement building repair maintenance projects? Certainly makes a huge difference within that fund. But again, you guys are just real healthy when it comes to a financial statement standpoint as far as what you're carrying over. Capital projects and debt service. Unless you have questions on those, I really don't have anything to elaborate on them. These were really all set in stone once your voters passed those bonds. Probably has a lot to do with why your building fund has been able to kind of save some money over the years. But really, those capital projects and debt service funds, just extending those bonds that you sold and how it was levied and how it's going to be paid off was really all set in stone when you guys sold those bonds and had those bond issues. The next few pages break out those codes individually. There are prior year problems in there if you want to kind of look at last year versus this year. I used to really like to go over those individually. I think with all the COVID money and some of the changes in how much schools have got that are received in federal funds these last few years and kind of deceives these financial statements. So I don't really like to look at them so much as last year versus this year because it kind of looks skewed because of all that COVID money. And then we've got about 20 pages of notes for the financial statements. These are really just accounting policies, definitions, and terms. Really the same language that's in all school audits. About in the middle of those notes, pages 32 through 34 are your bond issues. Again, I think I kind of really touched on already on anything I have to say on those, but they are probably the only pages in those notes that are different from school to school. Just for your guys too, outstanding big bond issues with the lease revenue financing. Let's see. The only fund I think I have a test on is your activity fund, which is on start on page 38. It's 38, 39. Really, I would like to bring up the activity fund separately because this is a high-risk area as auditors before you even walk in the door. It's probably the only area where cash is involved, whether it's athletic tickets or fundraisers or whatever it may be. It's the only area really where cash is involved. And so this is where we spend a lot of our time with our sampling and audit procedures, on controls, proceeding procedures, depositing procedures. So, and I think we do have one recommendation here that I'll touch on here in just a moment on that management letter with respect to that, but it's basically activity fund deposits. Since it's cash, the state law is that it has to be deposited on a daily basis. If it's less than $100, you can hold it for a week. Our recommendation is daily deposits. If it's cash, it should be deposited daily. And usually with the activity fund custodian or when the money makes its way to the office, they do a great job of depositing it daily. Sometimes it's a problem of the coaches when they get the money or the sponsors, the fundraisers. It's getting them to bring the money to the office for deposit, keep you in compliance with that. So I always stress this area just because it is high-risk. And so reminding sponsors, coaches, everybody of the procedures and the rules that are in place within the activity fund to properly receive, give tickets out for athletic events, and turn that money in timely, so for what it's worth. And then the last financial statement I'll touch on is page 41. This is the federal financial statement I touched on briefly a minute ago, the schedule of expenditures, federal awards. And this basically shows all the federal programs and federal dollars you received and expended. About the middle of the page there is that COVID money. You guys had about 2.7 million in federal expenditures and about 1.5 million of that was COVID money. Of the 3.6 million you received, 1.8 million of it was federal money. So you can obviously see why that's kind of taken a important, from the government standpoint, of what we should audit. Because 55% of your federal dollars was COVID-related. So the only other thing I point out on this page is that far right column. It says balance is 63024. Down there at the bottom right, it says 394,667. A lot of times people think that means carryover balances, but for presentation of this financial statement, that's actually money that you expended last year but didn't receive until this year, since all the money's with these federal dollars on a reappraisal basis. That was your May-June expenditures. Didn't hit the school's bank account until July or August of this year. So, you know, with you guys financially doing real well, probably not that important, but if you think about it, if that money had hit the bank account by June 30th, your carryover balance would have been 395, 394,000 more than it was. Best thing that counts receivable, but on your regulatory presentation of accounting. Okay, I know I'm long-winded here. I'm sorry, guys. Last but not least, the management letter. These should be the last two, three pages of your audit. And these were what I mentioned earlier, the immaterial findings, things that didn't affect the financial statements, but areas that we like to bring to your attention so they don't work their way into immaterial findings. Instruction projects, competitive bidding act, anything over 100,000 dollars. There's a lot of in-depth requirements with that. It has to be published in the newspaper. 21 days for the project, two consecutive weeks. There are certain bonds that need to be required. There was federal money spent on some of these projects. I think was it Seminole was the other one? I thought there was one more. Maybe there was. Oh, restroom project and the Seminole one. Davis-Bacon Act is another area that kind of came into play because some of that ether money was used for that construction. And Davis-Bacon Act is a pain. It's crazy. Basically, what that means is if you use federal dollars for construction-type improvements, you have to get payroll records from your contractor every week that they do work and make sure they're paying their employees prevailing wages. And to be quite honest, the state dropped the ball on educating schools on Davis-Bacon. And honestly, auditors dropped the ball on Davis-Bacon as well these last several years. It's one of those federal rules that's never applied. Schools didn't use title money for special ed money for construction. It wasn't until this COVID money came into place that all of a sudden it kind of hit us in the face and said, wait a minute, this was a rule that schools should have been following. You guys did get affidavits from your contractors where they said they paid prevailing wages, which is great. To my knowledge, the state's accepting that in a perfect way. You should have got payroll records every week and done kind of that extra checking to make sure they did. So this is kind of one of those. This is what everybody should have done. Nobody did it. You did it like most everybody else did. We'll see if that applies in the future. I'm sure that ether money is going to be audited more in the future and we'll kind of see where that goes. Annuity investments. There are several schools that have investments with this American Century and schools are really limited on what they're allowed to invest in. And honestly, just as our audit firm, we're not sure if this one complies with that. Not to say you're the only one that does it. You aren't. Our recommendation is, I guess, go with your attorney. And if your attorney says it is, I think we'll defer to their opinion. The schools are real limited as far as what's insured by FDIC, TDs, and savings accounts are pretty much it. And these are kind of in that gray area. So it really came to our attention a lot a couple of years, well, a couple of years ago, when the economy took a hit and schools had a loss. And that's really when everybody, we kind of opened our eyes a little bit more and said, should schools have this money invested in this particular investment? So something to think about. Travel expenditures. These next two are really just kind of common findings, travel expenditures. Anytime with our first-year clients, we recommend, we make the recommendation with travel expenditures. It's highly scrutinized. And so basically, the more documentation, the better when it comes to travel. Why they went, where they went, what for, if it was activity fund and it was the basketball team and there was 25 meals purchased, are there 25 players on the team slash coaches? You know, kind of a roster of who ate. Travel and credit card expenditures are just highly scrutinized. So it's more of a general recommendation than a finding or concern we had. And then the activity fund deposits, I think I mentioned that a moment ago on that activity fund statement, as far as depositing in a timely manner. There were certainly with our sampling and testing instances where it wasn't deposited timely. I think the controls are really good. It's more of making sure the sponsors, coaches, everybody knows on the site level to get the money to the office in a timely manner and the site knows to deposit it that day. I have, the activity fund deposits is probably the most common finding we have on all of our schools. Give me five minutes of any school and I'll find somebody that's holding money too long. But for what it's worth, and hate to be a broken record here, but it's cash involved, so it's higher concern for us. Hope I didn't bore you all to death. I know I'm long-winded here. I hate these Zoom meetings. I wish I'd have come out there where I could see you and I could feel your expressions and know if I should shut up or go away. But I don't want these findings either to take away from a really good audit. I think the staff did a great job of getting us records, everything on a Google flash drive before we even came out, access to the software, access to the grant management on single sign-on. And those are all the things we expect, is just to be transparent and give us as much access as possible to the records. So I'm sure they hated us being out there, but our job was pretty easy for the most part and we appreciate their help out there.
Thank you so much, Chris. We enjoy getting to work with you guys. Y'all are awesome. So thank you.
Don't say that. I know you don't mean it.
Yeah, we do. We do. We mean it. We mean it. Thank you so much.
All right. Well, let me know if you have any concerns or questions. Reach out anytime.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions for me? I think we, you know, talked a little bit about each of the things that he's talked about already. Overall, it was a very good audit. I will just stress on the activity fund again because he brought it up. This week and last week, we had activity sponsors not get cash to the office. And I want you to be aware of conversations. We had like some conversation about, well, why can't we pull it all in the office and some one person bring it down? And I want to address it so everybody understands. There are only certain people bonded for amount of money. And the people who are bonded in our district are myself, Dr. Bellows, Delaina, Stephanie, and Gretchen. And so we're the only ones that are bonded to hold large amounts of money for any given point in time. And it is just one of those things where we've tried to do a lot of great things and make things easier, but that's one we're not going to be able to bend on. People are going to have to bring their deposits to the office daily or if they, you know, have over $100. So we're going to be stressing that one and that one's going to hurt a little bit. But we've got to, we just got to get the money to the office. So make sure it's safe. So if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
So have we reached out on that annuity?
We have. I forgot about that. So I have talked to the attorney. The attorney did say that it was not an investment that he thought we should be making and we've already started the process to move it into our regular operating account and it will go into the sweep account that's FDIC insured for the same interest rate that we're receiving at American Century. So we're not going to be losing any interest.
Motion to approve the audit of the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
Roll call them.
Jaggers?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wallstaff?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes. Item for presentation and discussion of facilities improvement plans by Troy D. Rhodes and Cal.
All right. Well, I'm glad I'm an architect and not an auditor. So, somebody, there we go. You guys see that okay? Bad angle, please. So I'm going to start with the STEM building and give you an update on STEM building and then we'll shift after that and talk a little bit about athletic projects. You've got a brochure that's sitting in front of you. Those were basically created just to inform you but also provide just a PDF in case you want to, the administration wants to print these out and hand out at some kind of a community event or something like that. We've also got a large board that we could print if we wanted to have it out for display for easel. And then we would provide PowerPoint if that's necessary as well. So for the STEM building, some of this you've seen, so it'll be a little bit of an update on some of the renderings. Site plan is not any different than what we've talked about in the past. And so existing building here and then adding on about 2,800 square feet to the north. There, there's a little bit more, just kind of fill in the blank information there about numbers as far as aviation programs and desks and alternative education, parking spaces. We're expanding that by nine as well. So like we talked about aviation, esports, computer lab in this area, alternative education there, a couple of different restaurants, storage, and electronics. So pretty, pretty simple floor plan. The, I don't think there's anything more on that slide. Really, the renderings are what we've updated. So the idea then is to be able to use this information to help communicate to the voting constituents what the intent of the project is so you can get a positive vote when the time comes for your bond. So that's the approach. This is the ECC over here to the right. So this is the approach heading north and the approach kind of heading back the other direction to the south. And then the, really the key information we wanted to update you with besides the rendering updates is the cost estimate. So we've been working with Lingo Construction to finalize the conceptual. So this is conceptual budget. So their pricing and their So their pricing and their numbers are based on what you just saw. And so these aren't final construction documents. The intent and idea is to give, uh, enough detail to provide information to the district about the bond numbers that will eventually come. So the, this is just, just the construction aspect. What we'll be working on over the next, um, couple of weeks, probably maybe at the next board meeting, we'll present what we typically call the overall project budget, which will take into account, uh, the things that are not included here. You'll see a few things like not included, so building permits. Uh, I think if I'm not mistaken, the city of, the city of Bethany doesn't charge the school district building permits. So in that case, I think it'll be a zero. But there's other things like, uh, equipment, furniture. Um, in, in this case, if we're gonna be working with, um, Unforester to understand what the components of the project are gonna be that are not part of construction related to aviation and esports. Uh, I know their intent is to move, uh, some equipment over here and not just purchase all new. So we'll have to get an understanding what that is. But the idea then is to take the construction estimate, add it to the other costs and give a total expenditure for the district. That way you know what's gonna be, um, spent for the bond, uh, for the bond amount in the future. So this is, uh, broken down like, uh, construction contracts and projects typically are by discipline or by, uh, CSI specification format. But, uh, essentially you've got your general conditions, your site work, uh, concrete, masonry, metals. If I push forward, I've zoomed it in this way so that it's at least legible and it's not just on a small sheet like that. Yeah, everything, it, it's, everything is very similar to, to the building construction materials that are out there now. There's a few, uh, additional items that are a little different, but for the most part, there's a few other buyer owners there. But for the most part, this adheres to the types of finishes that are included on the existing building. TVs, monitors, furniture. Um, so right now where we stand, and this does include a couple of contingency items because we're not done with drawings. Uh, and so there's a 5% design contingency and another three and a half. So these are kinda some buffers that allow for the prices to, or the numbers to fluctuate between now and when we actually do go to bid. Uh, we're anticipating right now that that may be, depending on when the bond vote is, um, probably sometime this summer is when I, this, this coming summer, I guess is when we might, uh, end up going out to bid. Right now, the number at construction is 1,673,664. So that's kind of our starting point for where we're at on that. I think that's actually it. Any questions related to STEM? For where, for where we're at right now? All right, athletic facilities. So, uh, we've got a few updates on this as well from, uh, two things, renderings. Uh, and then also just kinda, we just, we started grouping these projects. We talked last time about there's so many different projects and some need to go in front of others or wait until something else gets done. Uh, in order to be able to communicate to Lingo, maybe what buckets to put some of those into for their pricing exercise. We needed to spend some time thinking about that. So I'll run those through, uh, just a little bit this evening. This is a similar graphic to what you guys have seen, I think, the last time we were here a month ago in terms of the degree of the projects. So when we're talking about recommendations, this is just our opinion about things that might need to be grouped. The first few are projects that can be grouped together. Then there, there's a few at the end that are probably more independent. Depending on the, so these aren't sequenced in terms of time and not in terms of priority. So I think the discussion has been, once we understand the dollars, then the information will go to administration and staff and coaches. And then they'll begin to prioritize based on, uh, funding ability. So don't think of these as any kind of order is what we're gonna show you right now. Uh, so the, the first kind of group of projects is really related to this expansion of the locker room area right in here. So we've got restrooms, men's and women's restrooms, and then a newly expanded locker room area. Also talking about potentially doing some concrete work, uh, in the courtyard right there as well. So that would be considered maybe one grouping of projects. And you could always add projects, groups together if you had the dollars available to do so. Uh, the next, and because of sequencing, the idea then is to, uh, pour a new concrete pad for the visitor's side bleachers. Move the current home bleachers over to the visitor's side. So that's what that shows. That's a project in itself. You can't do this work until that work is done. So you kinda gotta get those in order. Um, and then the same thing here. So if we're adding home side bleachers, we're also adding concessions and press box. We really don't wanna necessarily tear out all the, the concessions that are used here, assuming they're still used there, until you have this concession area built. So that's the reason that is kinda indicated there in red. And then another kind of grouping of projects would be the renovation. You could do some of these a little more pulled apart and independent, but some of them really tie together. So we felt like this was probably a good group of projects or good portion of the space that could be utilized, uh, for a renovation project. Now we're gonna shift over to baseball. So again, this is, is kinda an independent project, but expansion of the locker room and then renovation. Again, you can't renovate the coaches area or the existing lockers with the coaches until you've got new locker space. So these tie together. Uh, there, it's a pretty simple, uh, area that can be done independently. It can be grouped with other projects. We're thinking that some of the security fencing, there's a lot of new fencing and security and gates. Um, what we're showing is some of those tied into the areas where we're working at that time. So that's why we've kinda got that little purple line shown right there where some of that fencing is. Uh, same thing in here. So when we're doing softball locker offices concession expansion, if this is where softball currently is, we can't do anything down there until that is built to, to allow for that space to be renovated. So that's kind of another grouping of, of, of work that could be done. It would be very easy to accommodate these together, but you really need to make sure this is done first. So, uh, and then that's the renovation of the existing softball into more of a flex locker space. And again, some of the little, uh, fencing area there, uh, related to that corner. Um, relocated, uh, bleachers for, for visitors, uh, and home stands in the softball area. That can kinda be a bit of a standalone project. But again, just thinking of the sequencing of that, you know, those, that can be wrapped up into that softball, uh, office locker room concession area as well. The biggest project on here is obviously the, the construction of the new track and football field. Uh, and then all the concrete and fencing and everything that's associated with it. Uh, this is a pretty significant project, but we think that, you know, it makes the most sense to us to put all of those elements together rather than trying to do just the track and then wait on the field. Uh, and then, or just do the field and wait on the track. Makes sense to us to do it that way. And then again, now we're talking kinda independent, more independent projects. So this is varsity football areas and an expansion of the coaches' offices. It's a little bit more of an independent project. And then the identification, so you've seen the renderings of the screen, the purple screens that go around. That's what we're trying to indicate here, uh, on both sides. The only area that, you know, is a little bit concerning is this sequencing here. Not concerning in terms of comp, uh, challenging, but just the order in which you do things. Uh, if you're gonna build this building, it makes, it'd be a lot easier to build this building first and then build this screen wall. If you build the screen wall, come back, try to build the building, you're not gonna be able to put the skin, the exterior materials on the building because the screen's gonna be in the way. So that's just something we'll have to work through on a timing sequencing basis. But, but we, we feel like maybe looping that, the screen wall branding elements together is a good project, uh, that can be seen independently. And in a similar way, the gate, uh, that's kinda on the south side over there by baseball and softball is independent. And then the new kind of fresh, refreshed facades on these two buildings, very much an independent project. And then the home stands for baseball as well as the press box and concessions for baseball, all kind of independent. Now we're talking about field areas. So again, uh, baseball, uh, infield areas, not, not the turf out here, but just the infield areas. Uh, and then softball, the entire field area. And ideally, you just from a, it's always more efficient to do more at one time. But we realize funds are limited and you're gonna have to break this thing apart. But anytime you can do, if you can do bleachers and concessions and baseball infield itself all at one time, then there's efficiency in that. You're paying less overhead, you're paying less time, you're doing it sooner. All of those things save money, but you gotta have the money and, and willingness to go ahead and move forward on those projects. Uh, so these are updated renderings. Uh, with the last ones we showed you were kinda schematic. Uh, these are hopefully a little more, uh, photorealistic, um, to kinda give you an impression of what it is like driving west on 50th and then looking back, uh, to the east on 50th as well. Uh, new entry, uh, courtyard, ticket area, concession, uh, area there beyond the fieldhouse area there is. Uh, then that's the new south gate ticket area. Uh, baseball expansion. So this is the expansion portion here plus the addition of campaigns and fencing. Uh, that's primarily kinda focused on softball, but it would also include some of the other, uh, bleacher improvements and baseball concessions and so forth. And I think we've got an overall view there. Yep. So, uh, the last slide is really just that same list that we looked at last time. So these are all, this is all the types of work that we're doing. It's been rearranged a little bit in terms of the sequencing, but our, unless there's some thought today from you or from others, uh, the plan right now is to start Lingo on pricing, uh, estimates, just like we saw in the STEM building, uh, would be available for each of these kinda groups. What you'll end up with is this laundry list of, of menu lists, or if you will, of, of projects and dollars associated with them. So that you can begin to think about your fundraising and capital expenditures for those projects. That's my update. Any questions that you have for me this evening? Okay.
So I will, I'll say, you know, thank you, uh, for putting it the other way you have it. It's a tricky set of circumstances that we've talked about a lot of, of how, but, but you've done it exactly how we need it to be done, um, in all aspects. So it's, it looks great. Also, the way you've broken it down will allow us, and then just as a board, um, just to remind you, you know, the next steps for us, uh, at our next board meeting, we'll have Ron Fisher come and talk to us a little bit. Then the next board meeting after that, he'll come again. And that's where we'll really start talking about bond options. So we really have a lot of things to decide, even related to that. Um, because we're bonded for quite a while ways out. We have a little bit we could bond for and not go further out. We could bond for more and go further out. And that's just a decision that we all have to make and, and primarily the board has to make about where we wanna end up. Um, and so we'll have a lot of discussion that we'll have to have about that. Then apart from that, if we decide we don't wanna bond anything at this point, we wait till later, then we've got options. Okay, what can we look at with Dr. Jasper, um, in our building fund and, and some of our carryover funds to start piecing some of this together? So there are a lot of options for it. But as I've said before, one option we know probably is not likely is, hey, let's just do it all and, and get it done. So a lot more to talk about as far as that goes. But again, Troy, great job getting the, the vision on, uh, something we can see, something the community can see and start allowing us to work towards, um, figuring out how to make it happen as quick as possible.
Yeah, and we can do the same thing on the athletic projects. We can do, I think there's a brochure floating around that we can provide, uh, just to be able to show people big display boards if you need or PowerPoints, either way. Thank you.
Thanks, Troy.
Thank you.
Great job.
Out of five high school students and leaders' presentation of Israeli ambassador program.
You guys are up.
We're rolling.
We're just here to kinda give you a little bit of, uh, I guess briefing or debriefing the Israeli visit. We did a couple of weeks ago, too. I guess maybe three weeks ago. And the students are here for you to ask anything you'd like to ask them about. You'd probably rather do them than, than us. So any questions you might like to ask the kids or? Why don't you, yeah, why don't you stand and introduce yourselves?
Uh, I'm Hadley.
Caleb, Dan, Trey. Any questions?
Okay, I have a question. If anybody can answer this, but what was your absolute favorite part of having the Israeli students here? If you could pick?
I would say my favorite part was the culture that they brought with them. Like the first night that I hosted my Israeli exchange student, uh, his name was Asa, in my home. He had all these snacks and gifts and, um, like blessings from Israel that I'd never heard of and I had no idea what I was looking at. And it was really cool to see stuff like that. Um, Asa was really well spoken in English because he lived in Virginia for a while, but, um, not at the time, but when he was little. And, but it was really cool seeing like people like, or you see with Hadley, who wasn't, who weren't as well known. Well-known, we have a lot of culture here and it was really cool. It's like culture shock and hear them talk about like what goes on back home and what their culture's like.
I liked how they were just so excited about everything. Like something that was so small for us, they were like, oh my God, we get to go do that. Oh my God.
Like what, for example? What were they excited about?
One of the things they were really excited about was the yellow school bus and the ballgame. They're like, it's like, they kept saying it was like just like the movies.
Or, um, they liked seeing the guns in Mass Pro Shop.
Yeah.
They're like, there's just guns on the wall. They're like, I wanna go see them right now. And I'm like, okay.
Hadley off the beach said like, although like stuff is so rough back home, like they were just so happy and excited. So it was kinda like, like a motivator, like they're, you know, they're going through a time and they're still so happy it's impossible.
So we know you guys, um, unfortunately are not gonna be able to go to Israel. And so, um, you know, that's, that's sad news, but, um, you guys have been through a, quite a process. An application process, uh, interview process. Um, you've been, uh, coming up here, uh, about every weekend for a while, um, to have meetings and, uh, team building, things like that. So it's been a long process. And at the end of the day, um, you know, you got to host, uh, these exchange students. Knowing that and, and having that experience, if, if somebody came to you next year and said, hey, not sure, you know, if we'll be able to go again, but you may only get to host. What would you guys say about that experience? What recommendation would you make to them if they said, even if I only get to host, is all of that worth it? Or would you say, I don't know if it's worth it just to be able to host if you can't go to Israel?
I, I think hosting's definitely worth all of the Sunday nights because, like, even though we aren't going there, we still, like, they're such teachers. Like we learn so much about their culture even when they're here, even with like not going there. And it's really just, like, we still are friends with them. We have group chat, we help to them every day. And I think it's still just, it's still great, in every way.
I, I agree with what she said, that it was very impactful. I think they, it was really great hearing about all that they say. Cause even if we're not there seeing their culture in action, we, which we did actually see. They brought a lot with them, like, what was it, what was it called, the thing they do every Friday night?
Oh, yeah.
Shabbat. Shabbat.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, they, uh, like say a blessing and eat this bread. What's the bread called?
challah.
challah. It's really good. It's really good.
She made it while she was here, too.
And, um, just like cultural stuff like that, even here in America, it was really cool to be able to see stuff like that, even not going over there, so like the views like, uh, the Jordan River and stuff like that was what we would have saw if we were over there. I think, um, the process, the application process was, it was, it was a lot. But I think for the experience that we came out with, the friends that we made, the experience on, the impact on our family's lives. Like my dad still asks how's Asa doing, like almost every day, because he was a great impact to our family. He taught us a lot.
I agree. Some of you know him, but she had the full meltdown when I actually left, like a full meltdown. But I don't know, I think I was hesitant deciding that not knowing if I could, uh, go there because that's the main reason I wanted to go. But I'm super proud of it. I think it was, although we're not getting like, the more so like side part of the culture, like I think the stuff that they brought with them was still super important.
I was disappointed when I found out we couldn't go, but I was still so excited that they'd be able to host. And I think it's 100% worth it because you also, you not only get to know the Israelis, but you also get to know like the people from here that you're like going and spending time with, like every weekend. And then like for us, it was 12 days in a row. We were hanging out with the same group of people. And we still, we like, we still try and like hang out and go to lunch sometimes. And then, um, going off of what Caleb said about, um, our family, we FaceTimed the Israelis the other day. And my mom was, I went up to my room and my mom was like, hey, um, I ended up hosting two Israelis. It was my aunt and Or. And she said, hey, if my aunt and Or join, come back down, cause I wanna talk to them. And it's just cool to see how like, even though it was like, even though I was around them most of the time, they still impacted my family too.
Awesome. I'm just saying thanks, thanks for the way that you all have represented Bethany Public Schools and by hosting those students, you all have done a fantastic job. Congratulations, number one, for being selected to, to go. And so thanks for all you guys have done.
You might not know, but three of the board members, their children were ambassadors as well. So that's kind of a cool thing. They know exactly what you're talking about, how it affects your family and, you know, it's a great deal.
Emily was here, too.
Yeah, Emily had to leave, she had something she had to do. Anyway.
I bet you agree.
Piper's the driver. I'm just the bad man.
Thank you, guys, for joining us and sharing your experience, and again, representing Bethany so well.
Thanks, guys.
Item six, consent agenda. Questions?
Go through the financial fund reports.
Yeah.
So for activity fund, we have ending balance of 644,000, almost 645,000, very healthy. The activity accounts are doing well.
Was there, was there anything just out of the ordinary so far that you've seen? I didn't see anything, I just didn't know.
For this, for this report?
Yeah.
No, 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 everything right now is looking really well, and everybody's fundraising and, and bringing in, bringing in some money for their accounts so kids can do things, so that's good, that's good. I just need them to bring their money, get off. If they could just bring their money, get it off, this would be good. Then, just looking at the function summary report for general fund, that's obviously our biggest fund, we appropriated 19.5, we've encumbered 13.3, we've paid out 5.4 million, leaving us with about 765. Like I showed you before, when I did the presentation about our carryover, as you can see, that carryover's going to decrease significantly each year, and we want to get it to a stabilized point, so I'm not wanting to spend a full 765,000. I'm hoping we'll spend about 18.9 or 19 million, and that'll be good, but we're doing pretty well there in terms of expending. We have a lot more that we've actually paid out, because we did finish and complete paying for the roofing project. And so you're aware, we were able to pay most of that out of the general fund instead of having to get into the building fund. I had a PO split between the building fund and the general fund, and based on the way things were going, we paid for most of it out of the general fund, giving us a little more flexibility to some projects that might, we might want to do based on the presentation. So we're, we're moving in a pretty good direction there. Building fund is looking pretty good so far, and in January, we should get our first round of red blood money, which I look forward to. So that's good. And then in terms of the tracking sheet for revenue, you know, we just don't get a lot of revenue until about January. We don't, we'll do our first federal claim here in the next couple of weeks, we're still waiting on them to approve our last project or our last application. So we'll start getting some federal money, but we won't start getting tax money until January, February, March, so, we're getting our state aid. And then if you have any questions on any of the encumbrances, I'll be happy to answer those.
Have a motion on the consent.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Roll call vote.
Jagger's?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wallstad?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes. Item seven, approve the encumbrances for the general fund non payroll number 443 through 497.
Oh, sorry, I got ahead of you. Sorry, I got ahead of you.
497, 75,850, 53. Change orders for the general fund, 90,339, 12. And general fund payroll, 70,000 through 70,627, 13,667, 433, 53. Additional card readers on the 452.
452. Yes, the storm shelter doors, so we, we contacted United Systems, Adam will be better able to speak on that, but we did put the card reader on the storm shelter door, or we're going to.
Yeah, that was one door we didn't do originally when the building was built, and we use that door a lot more than we thought we would.
That's the one on the outside of the north.
The one that faces this foot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Item 461, we're finishing the high school gym floor. Did something happen to it, or is that just?
I think it's just standard maintenance. Yeah, we have some just regular wear and tear. I think we've been wanting to, yeah, they're just doing kind of the top, and I think they've talked about doing it for a couple of years, and we're just now getting around to it, so, and I'm told that it really needs it. I wouldn't know. I wouldn't know by looking at it, because I'm not qualified.
That's something they typically do before basketball season, or try to do before basketball season.
It's something you should do every year, really. I mean, as much traffic as that court gets, I mean, it can handle it for sure.
And then 467, let's just all of the?
Yes, so we receive, we're going to receive quarterly the opioid abatement grant funds, and then SNU's going to invoice us for that money. So we already received our first installment of that money, and then they're going to start invoicing us for, for that, so.
470 is a negative?
It shouldn't be a negative, I think that must just be an error in the report. I'll have to, I'll have to email ADPC, because I didn't notice that at first, but no, it's just $1,200.
Yeah, I was just, because it was.
It is odd, yeah, no, no.
On this one, on the change report, I would have think.
Yeah. No, there shouldn't be any negatives on this one.
Well, 485 with the volleyball nets for the Floyd Center, is that, those are our nets that?
Yes, we're going to own the nets, but we use the Floyd Center, and so we told them if they needed any kind of material, and they said, well, we could use some volleyball nets. So we're going to own the nets, we've ordered the nets, but we are going to allow it to use.
Motion to approve the encumbrances as presented?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Jagger's?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wallstad?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes. Item eight, discuss possible action on the payment of the annual mid-year stipend in the amount of $500.
We already have this encumbered, and we do it every year, and we're in pretty good shape, so.
So this is, this is a stipend to?
All staff.
All employees?
All employees, all employees, yes.
Motion to approve the mid-year stipend?
Second. Roll call vote.
Jagger's?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wallstad?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes. Item nine, discuss possible action to approve the revisions to the following board policies.
So again, this is just viewing, we won't actually vote on these items, and there's a lot there, and I know it'll take you guys some time to kind of look through those, so I'd point your attention to some of them. A lot of them, again, you'll notice they're things that we currently do in practice, but the way our policy currently, it's not as much detail as what is in here, and so, we see that as a good thing, that, you know, actually having it in the policy, exactly what we're doing, will be more clear as we move forward down the road. And so, you know, at some point, I would encourage you just to look through those things, because you'll get to see a lot of information about how things are done, that they're currently done, it's just not worded the same way or in the detail that we currently have. A couple that I'll mention, CFBB, which is on page 16 of your document, if you want to scroll through there. It references booster clubs, and I know historically, we have not utilized booster clubs, nor is this indication that we want to utilize booster clubs, it simply has a policy, if that is something that, you know, the board ever wants to consider, but at this point, it's not something that we're putting in the policy to be able to do that. It's just, it clarifies what that would look like if there was ever discussion to be had. And I think it's a pretty standard policy for most districts to have some kind of guidelines for those, you know, should that ever become an option. The next one is the metal detector CKAF. You'll notice that there is a note from OSSBA on the bottom of that one, and we're kind of going back and forth with them on this one still, because the original language that you can see some that is stricken through is not how we use metal detectors currently. It would have language like randomly every third person would be, well, we don't, we don't operate that way, everyone who comes through the door. So that's one use of how we use metal detectors, is our standard weapons detection when they come through. Another use, excuse me, another use that we utilize is if we have a suspicion of something, we use the hand wands. So those are two different things, the way their policy is written, it kind of treats them the same. So originally, we went through and said, well, we have every student come through the door, we want it to be worded that way. But then by taking that out initially, now it appears that we're not doing it based on reasonable suspicion, which is not the case when we hand wand, we always have suspicion for that, we don't just go up to a student and start handwinding them. So we still have to go back to them and figure out how to combine those two, the difference between weapons detection when they come in, and weapons detection when we suspect that there's something that they may have on them, and have reason to suspect that. So, we'll, we'll keep going back and forth on that. The CLBCB talks about armed school employees. This is not intended to arm more employees, it would just give policy to our SRO and anyone in the future that we have as an armed person in the district. Typically, that's the only person who we're going to, you know, have armed, but it does have some policy behind that as well. And another interesting thing you'll find is CNR1 deals with transportation, and some of that language does refer to routes and changing of routes in various situations. We don't have bus routes, obviously, we do have routes for, like, children's center, but a lot of that language is also important for when kids are riding the bus otherwise as well, so, nor do we anticipate running routes, but there are some unique situations where we may provide transportation for individual students on individual plans. So I think having all that information is fine, it kind of covers for those situations, but again, it's, it talks about routes in a way that we don't utilize routes. And obviously, there's a lot more there as well, as it relates to business procedures and just operating procedures. There's some policy about the food and management of things like that, Fair Labor Standards Act, things like that, standard things that we should have in the policy, so.
I did reading through the internal control one by the auditor. Number one in there says use only original signatures to approve documents. I think we need to look at that, because electronic signatures, stamps, that would preclude any of that use, so.
I'm glad you wrote that up.
The other one was down here, D, what is it, 70, is the use of cash receipts, in a reasonable period of time, if we're specifying next day, we need specify next day, so, you know, look through those, make sure that those match up with what we're wanting to do or requiring.
Yeah. We, I have reached out to OSSBA on the electronic signatures, because we would like to be able to load, like, our contracts and things into Adobe Sign and send to you guys electronically. And so we are asking that question, so that, you know, you can sign anywhere in the world, and we are looking at that. Right now, this is where we're at, but if we get new information, well, we will definitely answer your question, but yes, you're right. And I have read, read through these financial ones, and they pretty much do match up for what I know of what we're doing, or what we want people to do, if we can get them to do it. But yeah, and, and we're going to, there are just a couple of things, like the signature one that we are, that I have been asking them this week about, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ooh, internal controls, my turn, you know.
Yeah, I thought you guys might even ask, because it was an encumbrance. We, we've encumbered, or we, we've done an encumbrance for Adobe Sign in anticipation that we will be able to do that, so, to make it a little easier.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure they had updated to bring it.
Yeah, yeah.
What is allowed now?
Yeah.
A lot of instances. Okay, anybody have other questions on those? Okay, item 10, discussion possible action to approve the 2025 school election resolution.
So this is just standard procedure for the election for this year?
Make motion to approve the 2025 school election resolution?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Jagger's?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wallstad?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes. Left, discussion possible action on the Bethany High School Course Intermediate Algebra to be renamed Algebraic Reasoning with Functions in the Course Catalog.
Mr. Yulian, explain that a little bit.
Yeah, it's just a coding thing, you have to code, you have to have certain math requirements to graduate, and it's, it's not, it's not Algebra 1, but it's not Algebra 2, it's kind of in that middle, and if you don't code it right, the kids don't get credit for it. And so they, we want to make sure they get appropriate credit, when we met with our admin team and talked with their counselors, they're like, they met with Ms. Tackett, all of our math department, said, how would you really categorize this? They said, well, it's not Algebra 1, it's not Algebra 2, it's in the middle, but if you call it intermediate algebra, the state does not recognize that as a certified course, but they're doing more than Algebra 1, and they're doing more, they're not doing as much as Algebra 2, so it's in the middle, we just call it intermediate algebra. But they said, Ms. Tackett is the one who said the best name for it would be Algebraic Reasoning with Functions, is how you course catalog it.
Question I would have was, have you had a chance to visit with any other districts, how they're, how they are naming their courses, because everyone's dealing with it then?
Yeah, and so that's exactly right, the state department basically is saying, like, we're going to change graduation requirements, you have to have X, Y, and Z for math and science, and they're just changing it in the future, and we're trying to be ahead of the game by doing it. I didn't talk to anybody else specifically about it, I just wanted to make sure that we were doing right by our own kiddos and none of them. If they're taking a course that's above Algebra 1, they should get credit and not have to go back and take another class, because you typically go Algebra 1, geometry, Algebra 2, and then you can go to trig, statistics, calculus, all the upper level ones, but if you're only required to take 3, and you go Algebra 1, intermediate algebra, and then geometry, well, they don't count intermediate algebra. So then you have to take Algebra 2, and then if you have to take a fourth, which is what they're asking you to do, then you're getting into classes that, listen, I, I struggle listening to what Ms. Tackett is saying in her class in general, so, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, it's not, you're, you're putting kids in a bad position, so we're trying to do the best for kids.
Have we reached out to the OSDE to say, hey, here's what you're asking, so what, what should we name this?
Yeah, no, what we did is, we, we talked to Lisa and to our math department chair, we said, listen, how would you categorize this based off what the OSDE says would be specific catalogs that would meet requirements, and this is what it is, algebraic expressions, and that's what they said, this is perfect, and Lisa, and our math team said, this is exactly what we want. We want it to be exactly this, this is what they're doing. I said, okay. I said, let's get it all, get it in front of the board.
I think to clarify the question, so by changing the name to this, students will get the credit they need to get, as opposed to what they had before.
100%, yes, sir.
Motion to approve renaming Intermediate Algebra to Algebraic Reasoning with Functions.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Jagger's?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wallstad?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes. Item 12, discussion possible action to accept the bid from Lingo Construction Services to be the BPS Construction Management Contractor for physical years 25 to 29.
Mr. Mont, you want to just talk about this a little bit?
So, we put out an RFP specifically for construction management for larger projects. I received four bids, Lingo was, as, as far as the comfort level of the school and economically, Lingo was, was the best option. So, it's, it's basically for them to do kind of what they're doing with Mr. Rhodes that you guys saw earlier this evening, for them to continue doing that and what they've done in the past.
We did have them approve for our bond project, for them to be our construction management, and we just felt like we needed to.
And we just felt like we needed to bring that back to you to approve again because these are gonna be projects that are not associated with the bond or past projects that we've done and have that in place for a period of time.
And we redo this every four years?
Four to five.
I'm just assuming based upon what, 25 and 29.
I know we did, we did this with, with, what was the other one?
Bolt.
With Bolt.
That was smaller projects.
For smaller projects.
Right. Correct.
I make a motion to approve Lingo Construction Services as a construction management contractor for fiscal years 25 through 29.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Jackers?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wollstadt?
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Item 13, discussion possible action on the establishment of a Bethany Unified Club.
Ms. Williams?
Yes. So right now we're just looking to be kind of approved. We're not gonna pay a stipend for a sponsor or anything like that. All of the activities that, so it will be for kids with and students with and without disabilities. All the activities that they will be doing will be tied to our students in special education, their IEP goals. So I'll be able to purchase any of those supplies out of federal funds that they might need for any activities that they decide to do. This was actually brought to us by, I know, our Blackwell, Black Owl. And she said, hey, I wanna have a club, you know, best buddies or whatever. And so I have worked in schools with unified clubs in the past. And then this will also open up the opportunity for us to apply for a grant that's funded through the US Department of Ed and Special Olympics to kind of help fund that project. And then hopefully start growing our, our Special Olympics presence. We've got, you have to be nine to compete in Special Olympics. And so we've had a bunch of little ones over the last several years. And so we're at that phase where we've got some kiddos that are gonna be turning nine and going to be old enough to compete. And so this would just be a fun way to kind of start that process as we start adding more.
I'll make a motion to approve the establishment of Bethany Unified Club.
Second. Roll call vote.
Jackers?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wollstadt?
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Item 14, staff reports.
So we have a couple of staff reports. I'll let the two staff reports start. We have special services and we have the activities, board report. And then after that, I'll have the school improvement plan presentations. To Ms. Williams or Mr. Niber, if you wanna, or if you guys have questions for them, I guess is how we usually do that.
Oh, I just start board reports, yeah.
Yeah.
Good to see on the health services, a 93% return to class.
Yes.
Success rate. That's good. And almost 1,000 visits.
Uh huh. Again, yes, yes. We have, you know, and, and certainly some of those are same, same students that are, but it's a busy place.
Activities seem to be just thriving right now with the football team headed to the playoffs.
Football team rolling, first round playoffs. Cheer and ball both made state. So swim's going now. In fact, I think they're in Tulsa tonight. So it's, we got a lot of stuff going on. Middle school basketball kicked off. Girls have had a couple, two or three scrimmages now. Yep. Never a dull moment.
All right. It looks like elementary. You're gonna start us off for their school improvement plans?
Are you gonna do it? I can. What the plan was there? I don't have a clicker or interactive media for this. But our demographics are almost identical to last year. There were only like two numbers I changed. So very, very similar demographics. As we look at our attendance rate in that October one, it actually has improved this year, which is great. Last year it was actually 96.6 and then 96.7. So this year we're doing much better actually. So that's a good thing. Some of the changes at the elementary school, we have been doing monthly data meetings. And so we really made sure that we were doing that last year, but we have changed how it looks. So we have what we call RTI, which is our academic focus meetings. And then MTSS, the main focus is really behavior. We did what was called Behavior RTI last year. But we've really been looking at what the state is leading us towards with MTSS and kind of changing our process to help teachers. It was a lot of kind of, let's all just come together and talk through kids. But it was great for the conversation part, but it was really hard. A lot of teachers felt like there wasn't a lot of action coming from that because when you get everyone together, sometimes it can get a little challenging when we're talking about challenging behaviors. So we've adjusted our process and we've seen a lot of positive feedback from teachers, which is a really great change. Attendance monitoring, we did that last year as well, but this year really doing more tracking the chronic absenteeism because that's what the state also looks at. So we still do our unexcused absence letters. But we are now taking even more an approach of addressing our chronic absenteeism. Our emphasis on math. So we do have big ideas, which is that kindergarten through fifth grade at the elementary level curriculum and then Reflex and Fracs, which we had started a couple of years ago, but still really trying to support our math needs. And then maximizing learning time. This is a really big one. If you remember, across the district, we have looked at our entire schedule. So now we all kind of have this seven period class day. But what's really been important at the elementary is that we designated time for intervention. So special education, our multi-legal department and our RTI interventions. And the reason for that is we talked a lot with teachers to say, a lot of them said, well, we never have our kids. Like it's hard to give our tier one, our general instruction because they're constantly being pulled. And so that was something we really looked at is, okay, when are you teaching your whole group reading time? And when, when can we pull kids? Because also special education, some of our teachers service kids pre-K through second, whereas interventionists, they might serve first through fifth. And so it's just kind of weird. We're dealing with a lot of schedules. And so we've really been focusing then on how can we support our teachers to do what's best for kids and their instruction? We also have an additional Title I interventionist. So that's just giving another person who's able to provide those interventions. We also have our improved communication. We have our weekly newsletter called the Bronco Blast. Our social media presence, which you guys are very aware of, I'm sure. And then also rooms, kind of that district-wide initiative.
There you go.
It's the era.
Perfect. With relationship and community building, we really have a variety of ways. It was hard to really limit what I would share on this one. But the four that we'll look at are PTO, the Village Program and Care Closet, and then Classroom Communities. So in terms of our PTO, they do a lot. This is a new event. So right here, this is a picture from their mom signed out. Their focus this year has really been on the community. We know that's part of what makes Bethany so great. So from everything we're doing with PTO to our school activities, we wanna make sure that our families are connected and not just those who have always been here, even those who are coming in. So this was something that our moms on the board really wanted to build and grow and help make the opportunities. So parents actually got to fill out this activity form. And then they place them with other people in their grade level who maybe they're not connected with. So these are just some of the things you guys knew about breakfast with Broncos, grandparents' day, all the things I've talked about in our reports, but just kind of summarizing. And then these are just a few of their volunteer opportunities. They do so much more. And then there's a quote from Nikki Slant. You know, she serves on the board because she believes in creating a strong and supportive community for our kids. And so it is really cool to see their heart and what they're doing to support our families. Other things, you guys are very aware of the Village Program. And so this is just an update that Callie gave of what it is. You guys, I think, know the heart by now. It's been around for a few years. But something that's new is our care closet. This is actually up on our second floor outside one of our counselors' offices. But it's a cabinet that is accessible for all students and staff so that their basic needs can be met throughout the day. So if they have something like, they have even some clothing now, but this had general school supplies, shampoo, deodorant, just things that they may need or that a staff member may realize is a need that we can have on hand at all times. And then even in our work room, we now also have extra school supplies that teachers can just grab. If a kid runs out, we have it readily available. So pretty good to be able to supply that. Other relationships, or this is relationship and community building. So I will say up here, our classroom communities are truly one of the highlights of our school. And so these are some of the few things we have done that just really impact our school community and helping our kids feel connected and helping our families feel connected. So back to school letters. Third grade does class shirts. It started out with Mrs. Ross. And this year, actually, every third grade class did them. Flex grouping in second and third grade, they're able to really connect with other students and other classes. Our Bronco Go and Glow class shirts, you've probably seen those around. Every kid got them. And I will tell you, we have had so much connection when you have a twin day or when things are coming up, kids are wearing that and they get excited to see others wearing the same thing. We have book buddies, classroom compliment jars, where we're really just reiterating the importance of being their best all the time. And then camp class, and that we always have for fifth grade. So this is just Cassie Ross sharing on her thoughts on why she does her classroom community. And then right here, Mrs. Fields shared about her thoughts on kind of our book buddy program, which is where our older students connect and read with our younger kiddos. Success stories. The Bronco Go and Glow, you guys know we met that goal, which is really exciting. We've been working with Platinum Playgrounds to look at some renderings of what we can do with the funds that we have. And we're even applying for the Casey's Grant to help us get more funding. So we're hopeful that we will get that as well. Flex grouping, this is something that Mrs. Vian really wanted to share as one of the successes. So she actually was able to get the data to me after I submitted this. But what they do is they look at every six to eight weeks, how students are progressing. And we started the year with over 70 kids in like the first skills of phonics awareness. And at this point, and that's out of the whole second grade, at this point, we are now down to about 40 kids who are even still in those first five. But we've already have so many kids who are on to much higher skills. And 12 students have mastered every phonics skill to this point. So it is working and it's really exciting. Right here, spin for Sophia. We've talked about it a lot, but I don't want it to be forgotten as one of the big accomplishments this year. We're grateful for the assistance and all of our donors and how we've got to work together to support our students. Our multi-label program, Heather Graham is doing great things and just really helping to make sure that we are honoring all the cultures represented. And so that's a really great thing happening. And coffee with the counselors. Our counselors have made this as an opportunity for parents to come and see how they can support their kids. And so it's really cool. We've had two so far. And I think the first one just had a couple and, but it's growing each time. And parents can come based on if it's a topic that's applicable to their needs. So here's the fun data stuff. So with third grade scores, this is our current year, what we scored, what last year's third grader scored at our campus, and then this year's state average. You will see a jump in all of the ELA scores from last year to this year because of the new cut scores that the state put in place. But what you will notice is like, we are still well above the state average even with that adjustment. So, and in math, amazing, 30, 30% higher. So that's great. Fourth grade, so again, you see this big jump. Unfortunately, it is kind of hard to tell what is just us, but still we are well above the state average in both ELA and math. And then in fifth grade, we have ELA, math, and science. And so it's still really great to see how we are performing. And again, even though it had went down slightly with this group, we are still almost 30% higher. So those are good things to see. And I know Mrs. White is very passionate about not wanting to see that happen again. She reached out as soon as she saw those scores and was trying to think like, how can we do better? So, but still very proud of what our kids are doing. So just an update on last year's goals. We wanted to see our student growth outcomes increase by 10% in each subject area. We didn't make that. Maybe that didn't meet the realistic expectation for SMART goals. But we did see overall a 2% growth, but our ELA and math scores did both increase. And so we did still see growth, but it wasn't quite what we were hoping. And then our second goal was getting our chronic absenteeism from 90.75% to 95. That would put us on the state report card at that eight area. We didn't quite make it, but we did go up almost 3%. And we've learned that we thought the magic number was 17.5 days, but based on our calendar, it's actually 17. So there are about nine kids who pushed us over the limit, which was quite a bummer. But we're working and trying to help our families gain awareness. So our goals are very similar. They're still tied to these two areas because we do still wanna see the academic growth. What this is looking at is our progress. So our kids score really, really well. But on the state report card, it looks at if they're making progress, like if they already were proficient, if they're now going up to proficient high or to advanced. And so just making sure that we are still challenging students. And then our second goal is again related to attendance. I will say it's pre-COVID. This is the best attendance we've had. So we're making progress, which is really good. So sorry if I talked too long, but do you have questions? No, because I answered them all.
Quick question. Thank you very much. First of all, fantastic presentation. A lot of, lot of great information in there. Talk a little bit about Fracs math, I think is that, what is it called? Is that, is that our tier one support for, for everyone?
It is not. It is math fact fluency. So with that, Reflex and Fracs is partnered. So that's actually a fraction component. So once students have mastered their addition and multiplication, then we move them to their product called Fracs, which is our fraction math fact fluency. So that is just something that we do as supplement that students, all students get the opportunity. But it's part of that, just practicing math facts.
And one other item, you, you talked a little bit about, it looks like you're having great success with the, the flex grouping piece.
Yeah.
And so how do you group those students? Are you, what measure are you using to group those students?
Yeah, it's our phonics screeners. So they do a rolling assessment. They did it based off of, they actually created it. Our ELA committee looked at what they were learning from letters, what they've done with other programs and kind of made what fit our needs. So they kind of pulled the best parts of all of these programs to make our rolling assessment.
And I assume there's a score for each one of them. So then grouping them, the teachers are grouping the students accordingly.
Yeah, so they look at where their deficits are. So it's our pre-K through third grade, our primarily second grade will use it. But they will look at all of the areas on where they score. And if they see that's their skill deficit, they'll group them based on that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And that's not based on an overall score. It's based in part on specific skills within that assessment they've created to try to group kids together based on skills they need to grow.
Yeah, and so they start at the lowest. So they start out with like consonant vowel. And so we have a lot of CVC words, so consonant vowel, consonant words like cat, dog. And so they're looking at really the basics of their understanding of English and kind of how we can meet that meeting. Tender sweet sounds.
I had a question on the T-shirts, which I love that idea. Is that something that the school is able to provide or does PTO cover that?
Well, we had two this year. So the Bronco Go and Glow shirts, those were provided by sponsors. So our PTO actually went out to community sponsors. And so their logos are on the back of their shirts. But the third grade ones, that's something that their classrooms do together. They get to draw their pictures. And I believe parents contribute to that.
All right. Well, that's hard to follow. And I will tell you, I, mine is purple. And we start looking around. I'm like, why is mine the only one that's purple? I had two formats on my desktop and I uploaded my data on the wrong one. So I wasn't trying to outdo and go, we're all white.
With gradient too.
Yeah, this is crazy. Well, I need something after what you did. Okay, so here's our middle school. Demographics are about, everything looks about the same. We did increase 11 students this year from what we had last year. We were trying to kind of settle our number or maybe go down a little bit, but we gained 11. And so that's where we are with that. Attendance rate, so ours is down just a little bit. I'm telling you, we are still battling the COVID stuff, the mindset of we're going to go ahead and keep them home or we're gonna keep them home for a few more days. And, and parents just not understanding that, you know, that that does hurt us when we continue to have kids miss days. So, so we do have kids, I will tell you, right now, we have kids that are missing 17, 18 days already. And that's something that we should be less than that in a semester. And we're already at that at a nine weeks. So that's. So that's something that we battle. We send letters home to parents, we've made home visits several times. Officer Holcomb's really good about, you know, going to a house and we'll just drop off work or something, but really trying to stay on top of that and let them know that we are, we are watching, we'd love to have your child here. And, you know, some of the things have changed, and if you think, if it, if it is COVID, you know, you don't have to stay home for a certain amount of time. Changes at the middle school, we've had several things. So our master schedule, which she talked about as well, has been very beneficial. And I will tell you, the high school and middle school a lot, we have teachers that are the same. And even today, we had a different schedule that kind of had us keep some kids in classes, and we're, we know automatically that this isn't going to affect us because everybody is going to be at the same time. We're all changing classes at 10:40, and, and that's just really been helpful for all of us. I think we just didn't realize how, how bad that was and how hard it was that we were going between all these three different schedules. And so it's been a really nice change for all of us as, as administrators, just trying to keep everybody together on that. Three new teachers in the middle school this year that have replaced other teachers that left. Two new assistants that we have that help with our playground monitoring and go into classrooms or they're available if students need help that are out in the commons area. Anytime a student comes out, wants a quieter atmosphere, we're always have someone available, it may be me, it may be one of the assistants that's there to help them if they come out. So that's nice to have. Also, we were able to add an assistant principal, and that was, has been so beneficial. So just having someone to, to help and, you know, be there if there's discipline problems or the discipline problems start lining up, or having someone to bounce ideas off of. So that's really been great this year. And then we have Mrs. Williford retired, rehired, so she's here only part-time. So we were able to add a counselor that does part elementary and then part middle school, and that's been great, too. So we've really appreciated having, having that, and we, we use them. You know, it's, it's amazing of how, how much that we've been able to incorporate these new people and think, how did we do this without them? Because it's just been wonderful. This year, we're able to adjust our schedules, so this is probably the biggest one for the middle school. Take one elective away from all teachers and give them another core class. So they're teaching what they are trained to teach. They're, if they're a math teacher, they're not just teaching math three hours, and then they're doing a three hours of an elective. Now, they're doing math four hours and two hours of an elective. And that, what we, what that has done for us is we're able to lower the class sizes. So in all the math and science and history and ELA classes, we've lowered some of those numbers are down to 15, 17, instead of having the 26 or 27. And so that has been very beneficial to, to go ahead and, you know, take one of those hours away. Now, we don't have as many electives to choose from, but they're getting the extra help, they're getting the extra time that they need from those teachers and in a smaller class setting. And so that's really been good for the kids. The teachers have been very happy with that, and I think that overall, it's just been a great thing for us. Relationship building, so Bronco time, we have that once a week where they meet with their homeroom. That's where they'll check grades, they check their attendance, make sure that your parent has called in if you were absent, to make sure it is excused. Always looking at their grades and make sure, what do you need? Do you have anything missing? Because no missing assignments is our goal for the exemptions at the end of the semester. So this is just, allows the teachers to kind of help them stay organized because middle schoolers kind of struggle with that a little bit. So once a week, they're able to check in with them on that. Our village program, which she talked about as well, has just been wonderful. I will tell you, last week, I had a mom come in, and she was just in tears that she wasn't going to be able to make rent, her kids were hungry, and, and she just was like, I just want you to know that we're going through some things at home, and if they're acting, their behavior is different or anything. So we were able to give her some press cards and some target cards, and, I mean, she just cried so thankful for the school and what we were able to provide, and, you know, just something like that. We don't, we expect these kids to come in every day and listen to what we're saying and follow all the rules, and then you realize they have so many other things going on in their houses that we don't even know about. And so just having that and being able to, to give them something to lessen a burden is, it was nice to have, and it happens all the time with all the buildings. Flix with Friends, so we changed, instead of having two dances this year, we did one movie under the lights out at the football field and, and not a dance. So we had mixed reviews on this. The boys were like, yes, this is the best. We got to do all these things. Girls were like, no, we wanted to dance. And so anyway, towards, we took, did a survey, and when the survey all came, shook out, it was majority after we had this, they loved the Flix with Friends. It was just a time out at the football field, they had a movie going, but they were also playing cornhole and football, and they had popcorn, and just, some of them were just walking the track. And so just fun things to do with their, you know, peers in an outside setting where they usually don't get to see them like that. So after the surveys went out, it was, it was good. Boys were like, oh, all about it, because they were playing football with each other, and, and that was just right up their alley. Bronco games, we finished those up at the end of, I guess it was, right when we came back from fall break, we had Bronco games, and very successful kids get competitive, but they still cheer for each other, and that's always great to see. Purple tickets, what we do for positive behaviors, teachers' pets, they, they come in and they, even this Thursday, they're bringing baked potatoes for all of the staff of the middle school and teachers. It just does so much for morale whenever they have a lunch, you know, provided for them. And I can't tell you how many times teachers are just like, this just means the world to us that they're able to do this, and so we really appreciate that. Pep assemblies, we do those for Sports One each semester to celebrate all of our athletes and the different things that they're doing. And then we had an assembly yesterday for Veterans Day, which is the only, really the assembly that our kids get that they should be behaving in a respectful manner, and we remind them before we go, and, and they, they did a really great job. And so we're proud of them for doing that. There's a lot of times that we leave this and we're like, oh, they don't even know how to behave, that was horrible. But then when you look at it and you see these kids and what they do in other places, and today, walking through the gym, and I see a, a student spill some water, and I had three eighth grade boys run over and, and get, you know, napkins, and they're cleaning up this for a girl. It's just, you know, if you want to look for bad things and go around here, and you're going to find that. But if you want to look for good things, it is, they're everywhere. And, and these kids, they're good kids. You go out in the hallway and they're talking with each other, helping each other. You go in the cafeteria, and they're, one kid sits by himself, and then you have three jump up from a table and go sit by him. There's never a kid in our cafeteria that sits alone, and, and they notice that. So, you know, I think in a world where we all, education's negative, you can find the positive if you look, and, and it's everywhere here. Field trips, this is one of the field trips that they went on. We took them to the food bank last week, and they got to dress up in Halloween costumes. I believe the winners of the costumes were the three bowling refs right here. So they have a costume contest after they package all their food, and then we took them to eat at Chick-fil-A, and the Chick-fil-A went over and said, wow, that, these kids really behaved, and, and we were very impressed by their behavior. So those are always good things to hear. Success stories, Mrs. Toler has been a new addition to our school. Sorry from the elementary that she came to sixth grade, but man, we are really happy to have her. She did a project with her class where she got a map from this, rented this map. You can contact for the state of Oklahoma and get this map, and it was just huge. It filled our whole commons, and the kids wore their socks, and they were traveling from one part of Oklahoma to the other. And then they had to plan different activities where they would spend the night, and the students just absolutely loved it. So not many people got to stay in Thomas, where I'm from, because the night owl hotel would have been filled, and they couldn't make that stop. So they, they tried, they were trying to find Thomas on the map, and that's, that makes my day. Metal detectors, we've added those in the middle school entrance, that was kind of questionable there for a while. And I will tell you that since then, parents, we want those there, please do that. Kids will come and say, or the metal detectors aren't set up yet. Like, we're getting out there, we're going to have them set up. So it's, it's been a great thing, and parents have really bought into that, and just gives our teachers, our staff, an extra layer of security and protection, and they appreciate it as well. We've gotten lots of compliments this year on our yearbook and what Mrs. Esco does with that. I know that you all have seen her pictures, what she puts out for social media, different things. She teaches our students that, how to take pictures and how to, to find the right angles and how to, to get the action shots. And so that's just been, it's been wonderful, and, and I don't know that those students realize what great impact she has on them and what, how that would be beneficial to them as they move on. Mr. Toler, he got this through a grant that's last year from the foundation, and so he's added all these cardboard cutouts to his classroom. So when you walk in, you just have all of them standing around, and you just never know where they're going to be. Bronco games, George Washington showed up and was in the volleyball on the side for his team. So he was, his cardboard cutout was back there, ready to play as well. So here's to our data. Here's our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade data, reading, math, and then in eighth grade, they also have the, the science, and the, the numbers look great there, but like we said, they, they did change the cutoff scores. So if you look at this, this is our data from this year, or last year, this purple. This is the state average for this year, and then this last one is our data from last year. So we had a big jump in sixth grade from an ELA, and we had a, we jumped 2% in math, so going up is, is good. So, and we're still well above the state average in sixth grade. Seventh grade is the same, so we jumped up in all areas here, still above the state average in those as well. And then the eighth grade, quite a big jump from an ELA, up 31 points. Then math, we, we jumped up too, and then science, we did as well. So we were, we were up in all of our, all grades, all classes, so that was nice to see. Okay, so our SMART goals last year, 90% of our students will achieve on-grade level or a year's growth on reading plus. 93% of our students actually did that, so we, we did meet that goal and felt very good about that. The second goal, 90% of our students will achieve on-grade level or a year's growth on their Math STAR benchmarks, and only 89% of those, we were very close, were able to do that. So this year, teachers, we kind of had a staff meeting, we met and, and said, how, what can we do with this? The teachers wanted to use STAR testing more for their data. And so not only are we going to give that at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year, we're doing that more monthly, too. So we'll do that, they do one once a month, just to give the students the, the opportunity to do a test in the, in that setting on a computer. And so they are, their goal is 90% of our students will achieve on-grade level or a year's growth on their ELA STAR benchmark, and then the same thing for our Math STAR benchmark. So that is the, the, what we use for our data collection is the STAR benchmark in both reading and math.
I would have a similar question about grouping. You're using the STAR, and so do you all group students as well for intervention groups?
We do not, we don't have, we do, RTI will pull out with Mrs. Fur, she pulls different students at different times. So we don't have a time that we pull just different levels. But what we've done with the teachers now, with us having a smaller class size, they are able to level more in their classes. And so that, what they do is they have all of the kids' levels, so they're able to level their vocabulary or level their reading and, and change how they're doing that to be more individualized instead of just as a whole group thing. So on Fridays, they do a vocabulary test, but it's off of their level that they get through their benchmark.
Congrats on your scores and reaching those goals.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I'm a little frustrated right now. They told me no pictures, and they have all these pictures and stuff on here. And so now mine's a super embarrassing thing to have for that.
We have pictures because we last year.
I know. You just said no pictures this year, so I didn't have a picture. No. It'll be.
It's okay, you have Blue Ribbon.
I do, yeah. That's going to be a big one. Yeah. Our pictures, our pictures, I'm like, this is just the, this is the symbol, it's not a picture, it's a symbol.
You don't need to say, leave me out.
No, yeah, it is something that, you know, doing this for 20 years, you know, you, you see this stuff on marquees and billboards, and you don't ever think that you'll actually be the one that gets it. It's just something that doesn't happen, like, it's like a far-off, like The Wizard of Oz, like another, way off in the distance, you never see it. And so it was really cool. We just spent the last week, Dr. Bellows, Ms. Palmer, me, Ms. Tackett, Ms. McNally, Mr. Marshall there in DC, and just had a, I mean, it was just an amazing time touring the sides, seeing the Capitol right after the election was just amazing, but then getting together and just kind of going together as a group and talking to each other in that community is just really cool to get that experience. And we were, I mean, it was, it was life-changing. I, I sent a message to the group, like, I'm just proud to be a Bronco, and I really am. It's something that, it's talks from the elementary school to the middle school to the high school. I'm the one who kind of sees the end game a lot of times, you know, their transcript stays with them forever, and their graduation cap and gowns, their senior pictures, their composite pictures, but it's not me, it's the middle school, it's the elementary school, it's, it's early childhood center. They're the ones who do all the stuff, I just reap the benefits. And so I will brag on our score, high school's awesome, A-rated school, hard to find, and then this, this thing is amazing. I mean, I, I want you guys to, and you guys have already done this, because in 14, we got it as a high school, in 17, Dr. Bellows got it as an elementary school. But these are just some key things from MBRS that you need to be aware of. It's the largest award you can win in the country, hands down. There's none other nationally recognized award from the State Department of Education except for Blue Ribbon. Number two, we're the only high school in the state of Oklahoma, public or private, to get this. Anybody can apply for it, and there was multiple schools that applied for it, but we got it. Second time we got it, Dr. Winroth, I know he's already gone, but they got it in 2014, and then they get it a decade later, it's almost unheard of, like, you just don't get it. It's like once and done. Only two schools in the state have received it more than once. High schools in the state have received it more than once, and we're one of those schools. And then there's 356 schools nationally that got this award, and out of that number, only 63 were high schools. I got a big infographic, it's a little better than what I wrote, but then 56 were public high schools. I think that's important to know. I mean, public schools always, this is Donnelly talking, you always hear the negative sides about schools, all the things, and we're doing so many things right, it's important to be positive about it. And so I know it's kind of hard to see, this is from the national Blue Ribbon, this is just a larger image of the whole entire United States of where these schools come from. It talks about, you know, the percentages, most of our elementary schools, you can see 18% of all the schools are high schools in regards to these 356 awards. And it explains all this geographic, you know, the school type, choice, title one, and all those different data points that they look at. But it's just something I wanted to start off with, because we didn't really mention it when we got it, we were like, hey, congratulations, Blue Ribbon, but I wanted to talk about this and show you that this is, it's pretty amazing, it's absolutely wonderful. So I'll go back to the, the demographic side and do the state testing stuff, but demographics really didn't change. Only thing interesting to note is we did lose 20 kids from last year, based off of our enrollment numbers on October 1. We do get kids kind of come in and go, come and come and go on a regular basis, just because there are some transient populations still in Bethany. But we did lose 20 kids from last year based off of October 1 numbers, which was, I mean, great. I mean, I'm not saying that, I don't want kids to come here, but when you're 575 and the school's built for 450, it's, it's a massive difference. So it was nice to see those numbers go down, but demographics really didn't change wise. Attendance rates did go up, we still continue, we hold kids accountable by not only the letters that they talked about previously, but we have exemptions, and the middle school does too as well. If they get five absences, excused, run-excused, they lose exemptions, and so kids really buy into that. But also at eight, the State Department mandates that you can lose credit for the course per semester. So if your kids get eight absences, hey, you can appeal it, and to appeal board, which is myself, Mr. Marshall, the counselors, we can give credit if somebody has a medical condition, whatever, we typically do, but otherwise, I mean, our attendance rate is fantastic. Very rarely do kids miss. There are some habitual line steppers, but we're pretty good with attendance rate. Safety and security, you guys know this is just one of our goals for not only this, last year, but this year too as well. The weapons detection system, I would tell you immediately last year was met with resistance. Concerned, people were frustrated, they didn't like what was going on, but now it's, it's, it's just normal, it's normalcy. Everybody walks in, and it's, we, at the beginning of the year, we used to hand the computers back around through the weapons detection system, we were concerned about dropping them. So now when you walk in, every kid will take out their computer, and they'll just hold it above their head, they just walk on in. it above their head, they just walk on in. And it's seamless, very little wait times. It's at the beginning of school, all through the concurrent, kids will come in, CV tech that comes in, lunch. I mean, I stand out there at lunch every day and check kids in, and it's never a wait. Kids know it, it's just expectation. And IDs, the same thing. Initially, people freak out, they're like, oh no, you have to wear an ID? I haven't been to school here since I was in pre-K. Well, I don't know you, because I'm new, this is my year, second year. But more importantly, it just distinguishes us. Like, they know, you go to Bethany Public Schools, this is an ID, this is what you wear, this is the expectation. Great success with that too as well. I really love it, I think it's been really fantastic. Vape detectors, you guys know this, we installed vape detectors in most of the high school, but this year we added a couple vape detectors specifically in the locker rooms, and then in the STEM building too as well, because those are still populations that are, there's people that go in there on a regular basis, want to know what's going on. And so we have that, it's linked to my cellphone, to Mr. Marshall's cellphone, Austin Holcomb's cellphone, Donnelly has it. And then as soon as they go off, it sends us texts, go grab the kid, scan them, search them, wand them. And unfortunately, yeah, there's still, there's still some struggles. But I would tell you, the alerts, and I've mentioned this previously, but guys, they can't, I mean, it would go off constantly. We'd be sitting here just zip, zip, zip my phone, we'd beep, and I'm like, what is going on? Now, and partially because we do stand outside, if you ever see us during the day, I'd say 60 to 70% of the time, Marshall and I stand right in the commons area, and we just have our desk outside, just trying to be visible, you know? Proximity destroys a lot of bad behavior. And so we try to be close, but then again, there's still a little bit, but not nearly what we had last year for sure. Our SMART goals, ACT is another one of our goals, we want to, to address, kind of a measurement point. We do have state testing too in science and in history. It's really hard, because it used to be tied to like graduation, and if you can get your license, and all these things, and now they took those components out. And so now we really use ACT, because it's a state mandated test, and they ha, every junior has to take it regardless. So what's interesting is you can see kind of the, how the progression, it kind of goes 19, 20.6, 19.9. This last year, we increased it by .5, like half a point, which was really, really good. We had a program we use with Olympia Prep, then we're going to continue that partnership moving forward. But I think it's something that, it's really good, I think it's another good goal to have, because this helps kids get to college. And ideally, we're a college preparatory school, we want to funnel our kids, if they want to go to college, to college. If they don't, they can go into the military or careers, but if they want to go to college, we want to give them every opportunity we can. This is really cool, I wanted to show you this. This talks about ACT. Our score was 20.4, the state average was 17.2. So if you took all the high schools that took the test on, in April as juniors, the average was a 17.2. We were at a 20.4. So I know the middle school and high school showed state levels too. I wanted to show you, this is taken right from the State Department's website. It's important to note that we're, we're doing something right. I mean, I know it's not, I wanted the goal to be 22, I had a lofty goal, worked hard to get it, we didn't get there, but we still are really good. I mean, we're in a really good position. My goal this year, I think I kind of jumped it a little bit too high, I wanted to go from 19 to 22, and I know it's a lofty goal, and there's nothing wrong with reaching for the stars. But I think it's important to give something that's attainable, and I think 21's good. It's hard, because it's not a test that goes like you take it as a freshman, and you take it as a sophomore, and you take it as a junior, and a senior. You only take it once typically, as a state mandated one. And so you only have one data point for only juniors for that grade. Well, then next year's a whole different group of kids, and the next year's a whole different group of kids. So we're trying to grow overall, it's just a hard data point to get to, but I think that's a really attainable goal, we're working hard to get it. We're still, oh, sorry, I'm supposed to have the partnership with Olympia Prep, we're still partnering with Olympia Prep, it's just something that's going to help us increase our ACT scores. Questions for me?
With the Olympia Prep, I know there's individual students that kind of have the whole tutoring thing.
Right.
But can you share with us a little bit about, how's it used by the general teachers in the classroom?
Yeah, so it's a great, great question. So we ended up meeting at the end of the year, and I got survey from not only the staff, but then students too. I have a student advisory committee from freshmen to seniors, but really targeted juniors, and I want to hear what they thought about it. And so their feedback was, we broke them down based off of what's called the PSAT test, or the pre-ACT test, sorry, we do pre-ACT tests. Pre-ACT test basically determines, like, if they were scoring from 15 to 17, they were in a classroom. If they were 17 to 19, they're in a classroom. We grouped them together like we were talking about previously. And so we had individuals from Olympia Prep would come in and do specific remediation based off of their scoring. So if you're scoring 15 to 17, you need help on a larger scale, like general, specific ideas of test-taking policies. If you're scoring, if I'm Dr. Bellows' daughter who's scoring, you know, in the 30s, and she doesn't need general ideas, she needs specifically on the top, missed questions on this component in ELA, or math, or science, whatever it is. And so we really kind of grouped them based off of that. What I found was, the feedback was, some of the groups were really good, but I would say almost all the groups had a similar context of, we want more accountability in the classroom. We want our teachers in there to help us, we want to make sure that they have the resources necessary to do these remediations to increase the scores. So we met, Dr. Bellows and I met with the Olympia Prep founder and talked to him about what we're looking for. And this year, we're going to be looking for more of not them bringing their experts in, them coming by and giving training to our individual departments, math, English, science, and history, and saying, hey, here's the tools, and give them, whether it's an actionable step, like for example, we have what's called essential elements for history. And so these are the things from United States history, specifically post-Civil War, 1868 to 2015 roughly is what they cover. So what are the essential elements they need to know? Well, you can start the day off real easy with two questions, or just a question on the board. It's going to be geared towards the ACT, and it's going to help engage them with an actionable step, it's not just a pie in the sky, random theoretical framework, it's literally an actual, this question you can see on the ACT, and it's going to be on their board. So we're trying to give them something they can use on a day-to-day basis, is what we're trying to do. So what's going to happen, Olympia Prep comes in, they talk to English for maybe two or three hours of PD, give them actionable tools they can use, then the English teachers go back and they implement them in their actual class. It's just a secondary resource we think will be helpful.
Is that something you'll be doing in the second semester?
Yes, this semester, we'll finish, we'll start this semester before Christmas, and then the second semester, but we're still going to do the testing, we're still going to do, because I don't know, I felt really weird, because I thought when we did the testing for everybody, and we sent those letters home with all the data from what they got on the testing, I would hear a lot of like cool feedback, like, man, this is awesome, I love looking at this, and it was like crickets. And I, I sat there going, man, I thought this was going to be a, a home run, and it, it just, it done it out, it was barely a single, like, I got, I got no traction. But we're still going to do the testing for freshmen, sophomores, juniors, senior, or seniors will opt out more than likely, but those underclassmen, freshmen, sophomores and juniors will meet, they will take an individual ACT test before Christmas break, they'll take it after Christmas break, and we will have cumulative data to bring you guys. Instead of just one grade juniors, we're going to have everybody's grades. Then what will happen is ideally, the following year, we see progression, we see, hey, next year, we see the sophomores here, from freshman to sophomore. And so that was one of our biggest, Dr. Bellows and I talked with him about, like, we want to see data for long periods of time, not just that one snapshot of juniors, then the next year's the whole entire group of kids, you never know. So, yeah, we're, we're planning on doing that here soon.
Thank you, and congrats on...
Yeah, I just can't just... It's unreal, it's absolutely unreal, it's like pie in the sky, it's crazy.
Very good, thank you.
Sorry.
Got something real quick, it won't be long, but do have something real quick.
15A, vote to convene an executive session.
Yeah, second.
Recall vote?
Jackers?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wollstein?
Yes.
Hennig?
Yes.
During the executive session, only the members of the board, this will pretend it were present, only the items discussed were those listed on the agenda, and no votes were taken.
I'll make the motion to approve the hiring of personnel in addendum A for the 24-25 school year, pending all favorable returns on the background check.
Second. Recall vote?
Jackers?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wollstein?
Yes.
Hennig?
Yes, 17 informational items.
All right, so some big events coming up. The biggest one, coming up this Thursday is the Foundation banquet, so I enjoyed working with the Foundation, they've got a great group working, and they've been working really, really hard to procure items that's going to make it a great event, to bring your checkbooks too. But also just, you know, I know what the work's gone into it, you know, we're going to do a good job raising funds for, you know, teachers and students to, to be able to enhance what they're doing in the classroom, and that's what it's all about. So very, very proud to have been a part and around the Foundation and all the work they've done, and I just, I know it's going to be an awesome event. Third grade musical is November 21st, and then Thanksgiving break is coming up, the 25th through the 29th, so looking forward to that.
Item 18, board member comments.
Congratulations again, I don't know, we just talked about this, to Mr. Jewell and everyone else that, that helped with the Blue Ribbon, and congrats on all the improvements and the scores. That's, I know that's, that's very intentional, and a lot of hard work, both by you and teachers and teachers assistants and everyone, counselors, et cetera, so congrats to everyone.
I'll second that. Thank you all for your reports. I will say this is one of my favorite meetings of the year, to see all of you get so excited about the results that you've had at your school. So thank you for all of your hard work and for sharing that with us.
Item 19, superintendent report.
Okay, one thing I'm going to start with is, I'm going to hand out your continuing education reports for you as board members, something that we're required to do and have on the agenda item, so, yeah, that's what we were told. So I will say, as I pass these out, thank you for not just your time that you give in these meetings and, and, you know, discussion and thought to our district. Oh, I think I got it in here, I skipped one, yeah, I'll get that to her. But this shows, and you're all in good standing as well, but it shows that you're also committed to just growing as board members and, you know, learning the ins and outs of what it is to be a board member. And, you know, certainly, I know that's conferences and some trainings that you have to attend, but thank you for, for going to those things and, and just truly learning and being engaged in those things to assist this district and assist me in, in my role. Just, it's a great board to work with and appreciate you going through that time as well. So we've talked a lot about the Blue Ribbon. Another cool thing about the Blue Ribbon that I want to point out is, the high school students who are currently in the high school also received this award when they were in the elementary school. So every high school student who was here in elementary would have also received. So I know the stats of schools receiving it twice are probably proof of it. I would imagine the stats of students receiving it twice, and having a, a daughter in the high school currently, just makes me think about the opportunity these students have had from beginning to end. And I know that's not an isolated thing, just to this, these four years of students. It really does point to what Mr. Jewell said, which is, you know, these students have an experience from pre-K to 12th grade, and when you look at that whole experience, for this particular group, pretty phenomenal what they've been able to accomplish, but they've been able to accomplish that because they've been surrounded by teachers, staff, administrators, board members making policy to allow all these things to happen. And so when you think about it in that perspective, having a daughter in the high school, that's pretty cool that, that my child and everyone else's children get to experience that. It, it's really a special thing, and that's just an indication of it, but just another cool way to celebrate that. Again, like you said, Ms. Palmer, I want to thank the sites for their school improvement plans. One thing I would add to that is, they mention a lot about change, and we know change is hard, when we change the master schedule, when we change curriculum, those are exciting things, and when you look at them wholly, it's exciting. But we also know when, when you take individual teachers and the sacrifices, I'd go as far as say sacrifices they have to make within their part of that, learning a new curriculum, learning a new schedule, changing some things of what they teach, it's a challenge, it's challenging for them. But when we're able to look at the whole picture, and when they're looking at the whole picture, we see some of the great things that are coming out that the principals pointed out. Another thing that we're doing is looking at efficiency of those schedules, so the, the scheduled times was one part of that. Mrs. Donnelly mentioned, you know, adjusting some elective, core teachers teaching electives, and she's right, that's been a huge thing, because when we go back and look at the efficiency of the master schedule, both at the middle school and high school, our numbers look really, really good and really balanced, more so than in the past because of some slight adjustments. And we'll continue to do that, because ultimately, we'd like to be as efficient as possible in sharing teachers, in utilizing staff effectively to make sure we have the right staff in the right places. But initial numbers are really, really good about class sizes, really phenomenal actually. If you compare them to other places, I think our teachers would probably say, you know, we're pretty fortunate to have the class efficiency and sizes that we have. Another thing I'd like to say is, I sent this out to the staff, but our Veterans Day assembly, assemblies were just amazing, was able to attend both, and as, as wonderful as the assemblies were, and our performances with the band and, and Mr. Sharp and, you know, the, the students who participated in that, the students in the audience was also really cool to see. And, and we teach a lot about respect from the beginning, all the way to the end, and this is one of those that as a leader, you just hope your kids get, right? You hope they get the importance of this day, and having been in those assemblies and see, they get it, they got it. Now, I think teachers, you know, kudos, they probably reinforce that. There were a couple times, you know, I mean, it's, these assemblies aren't short, and they might get a little antsy, but they, they reinforce that. And at the end of the day, I, I know our veterans who came, who were being celebrated and recognized, also saw that. And, and from my perspective and the principal's perspective, I was just so proud of, of our students and our staff for helping them get there, but it truly was the reverent, you know, feeling that it should have had. So very proud of, of our students and staff for that. We mentioned activities, and, and when you really break it down, cross-country, boys and girls both going to state, volleyball state champions, Chair and Palm both going to Game Day State, football headed to the playoffs with an amazing record, band, orchestra, choir, if you look at, you know, the superiors and the ratings, when you hear them perform, it, it's just different. It doesn't matter how big or small the group is, they perform at a high level. And so just a lot of great opportunities for our students and, and great leadership in those programs. Want to thank the business office for the audit. Again, when you switch over to a new company to do that, it's a tricky time, because there, there is different perspective, there are things that they could see, well, we don't agree with that, and the findings were, were so minimal compared to that, and a lot of things, you know, that we've touched on are things that are easily, you know, fixed or have been fixed. Actually, I would go as far as, most of these things have been fixed already. Dr. Jasper has proactively already changed a lot of those things before the findings even came out, so, but it really truly is an amazing audit, especially switching companies. And I know the, the work Dr. Jasper and the business office has done to make a lot of changes. Once again, not easy, because people have to learn new things, they have to learn new systems, they have to learn new processes that haven't always been in place, and that's challenging to get there at times. But they've been great support, you've seen, I think as a board, some of the information that's been shared, the website, the, the pages of information, like, it's, it's there and it's accessible, so it's a learning process, but they're providing the, the resources to be able to... but they're providing the resources to be able to be effective in that way too. So thank you, Dr. Jasper, and all, everyone in the business office for all their work. And we also see the budgets in a good place, and we have a lot of big dreams and big visions, and it allows us some opportunity to begin to explore those things, so can't say enough about the job they've done. And then I already mentioned about the foundation auction, but truly looking forward to that event, and encourage everybody who's listening to please come out and support the foundation. Some can even auction items online if you can't make the event, so looking forward to that this Thursday. That's my report.
Word adjourned.
Thank you, guys.